I'll move with you, sir.
What's that?
On the favor, aye. Number five, approval of minutes for the last meeting, June 13th, 2022.
Bring it up right for me.
I'll second that.
On the favor, aye.
Aye.
Number six, discussion of possible action regarding western plant youth and family services in West Oklahoma. Original juvenile detention center agreement with Woods County an amount of $68 per job per day.
And there's two coffee smokers.
Okay.
And that's the ones we usually use.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
I'll second.
On the favor, aye.
Aye.
And it's the same person.
I don't know. They're kind of disowned me how they can do things for the same amount as they did last year. Had no problem going up before. Everything, every day they buy.
I was kind of thinking the same thing.
I am. Sure.
But they probably want to go to assistance too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, there's another one. We got two of them going. You have assistance. Oh, they'll probably catch up next time.
I mean, just not getting them good. Kids are just too good.
Okay, number seven, discussion of possible action regarding appointments of Abar Grill, our authority board members. Well, we bought Firth, who he took a position to teach, go back to teaching at some university or something. I don't remember exactly what it is. He resigned, but is it Todd?
Yeah, Todd's up this year.
Todd's term is, so if we will need to appoint somebody, not today, but we need to approve Todd's renewal, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, I guess all four of Mount Poe, Standbuck, and insider Todd Holder. We need to approve that of those guys staying on there. Then they will be in search if you guys have any.
Salute.
Any.
I'll second.
All favor. I mean, give it some thought and we, they have a quorum, so.
Have they got anybody in mind?
I went to the meeting and no, they don't.
Not in particular?
You know, I mean, they made a couple of suggestions, but I, you know, I don't think they were. I mean, those people gotta be willing. And they may, we had some interests.
Me and us, we could find somebody just a little younger, I mean, Rockford on there.
Right. I've got a person in mind, but I don't know, I haven't, I haven't talked to him, so I, I don't know. And he, they live here now, but he, he wasn't from this area originally. And maybe would have some different ideas, but I'm not gonna name any names until I talk to him to find out if he'd be interested. I don't want to catch him off guard by it being an internet on YouTube. So, but you guys think about it. I mean, nobody that I know of in particular, you know.
Right, right.
So, okay. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding resale property fund financial statement. And I guess this is.
Just in total.
Total reserves is $188,346.56 per day. Cash balance net. Add any. Okay, well, I guess cash balance, 107,3,797. There's 14, 14,543 dollars of evidence. Add any unappropriate, unappropriate portion items. And I don't know what unapportioned items are. So, but it looks, looks like it's fine.
I'll move to accept that. Second.
On favor, aye. I don't have a clue what last year was.
Aye.
Okay. Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding ACCO's SIG fiscal year '22-23 resolution and payment options for Woods County property and liability in an amount of $108,851.
How much did that go up?
Last year it was just under $70,000. I'm pretty sure.
Something to drive.
So.
And they did say after that meeting, I went to the meeting before the CP, that they have hired some, some people, some places come around to check what we have insured. And if, one of the things they brought up is if something would happen to the courthouse, if we would want to rebuild and be historical like it is, or want new construction. Because there's a lot of difference in the price of redoing with what you have.
Right, you have.
Or a lot more of a redesign, a whole new, if something would happen to this one, on the replacement cost. So, anyway, I guess we don't have any choice. They said everybody said when, uh, I would like to see. And I'll ask, I didn't out there, but I think we ought to be able to look at some other people's stuff.
Is there anything out there?
What their increases were. I was really unhappy with the work that's gone.
Yes.
What it did went up. They paid us out $40,000 in seven years, and ours went up from $59,000 a year to $75,000. That's why an increase considered and able.
What we paid, what, what.
What they paid compared.
Guarding bull's shell.
Yeah. But Heath is our insurance rep, and he assured me that everybody's did that. But it would be kind of nice to see what others.
See what.
You know.
Well, I could contact some of the county clerks and just ask them what their.
Well, it should be public record. They should, they should give us a whole.
They, they really should. That's what should give you, yes, they ought to give you comparisons.
Yes. I want to know. I don't care. I mean, if everybody went up, that's fine, but the percentage and.
It ought to be, it ought to be even.
I'm like you, they could do, they could do a report. ACCO could for Everett, for all the counties.
But anyway, I don't think we've got any choice right now.
No, we gotta.
So.
I'll move, we accept it.
Yeah, on second. On, on favor.
Aye. Be good, do you want?
Oh, there's two pages.
Oh.
Sorry, the resolution and the.
Number 10, oh, sorry about this. Okay, number 10, discussion of possible action regarding ACCO SIG fiscal year '22-23 resolution and payment option for Woods County enhanced 911 property and liability in an amount of $6,406.
And last year that one was running around $4,800. So, it went up, that's what we called it. So, there's two pages on that.
Why are those intersept? I probably, this other stuff is, I'm.
I think they have to have a liability on like their calls.
Oh, there's a lot of deeper stuff.
And I see that.
Yeah, and then that, those radio, a lot of other.
All the equipment and then the liability is just different than.
Yeah.
And so, anyway.
I'll move, we accept that also.
My second. On favor, aye. Two pages here, too.
Mm-hmm, yes, thank you.
And I guess it was the option, we, we didn't talk about the options, but we're gonna take one off once it's cheaper that way, right?
Yes, it is.
That's the way we've always done it. Don't need to pay on measures. Yeah, hurt.
Right.
High enough, where it is, about paying more.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can play one way better.
Yeah.
Okay, number 11, discussion of possible action regarding.
Second page, sorry.
The transfer of appropriations from Highway District 1, CIRB, to Highway District 1, Personal Services, an amount of $4,880.49. And District 2, CIRB, to District 2, Personal Services, an amount of $4,880.49.
I'll move with you, sir.
I'll second that. On favor.
Aye.
Just one flash on the bottom. They tested the circuitry. Okay, number 12, discussion of possible action regarding bids, number 212207, six month bid.
Camper organized it like she always does, highlighted the.
Low bids.
Low bids. And. So I guess you just have to go through and pick which one you want, which company you want. And then if that doesn't work, then you can go to the next lowest. If it, if it's not available. So, I don't know if you guys just want to mark it top, which company you wanted to go with on each one of these. And then I can organize it in the minutes.
Can we not just do it like?
Yeah, me and.
That one and this one? By that number, by that number.
Because a lot of that will be.
No, that's just the accounting.
Difference. And that hot mix comes in real.
See, it says lease rental.
Yes.
But this one here, it says lease rental. But I'm, I'm buying this one and I'm leasing this one.
Yeah, it's between Circle S at Clinton and then Cummins, Zedina, and Woodward.
Shattuck National Bank one.
There's considerable difference.
I gotta call them at the end of July to.
We got two hours, a little better than Clinton.
The 185 pay, buyout deal.
On a hot, hot day, that, that really makes a lot of difference.
Cat grader.
Need to buy out.
Yeah, so Corvay is the loader.
Yeah, Shattuck is the.
Um, the John Deere grader.
Mm-hmm. That's a rental. And then Shattuck up above, Cat Grader, 143.
I'm not paying on this right now because.
That's the one that.
I'm not paying on it right now.
That's the one I'll let go back in August.
Yeah, I gotta call the bank and make the rest of the amount to be 185 so that they can buy it back.
I mean, like on.
Cat can.
But we will probably take 185, right?
No.
Can we accept that?
It'll be down to 185.
Depending on.
That's what will be left, so I just gotta pay off the amount to make it equal to where it's exactly 185 left. So that they don't have to give us any money back if I overpay.
For four hours.
If it's 185, it's not bad.
So you only have three payments that I'm making right now, right?
Of course, it depends too, how long you get in down there.
Is that what?
Done that with her.
That's true too.
If they're all paid for state, like.
Yeah, it becomes big.
What's, what are you talking about?
On the hot mix.
Hot mix on page 14.
Uh-huh. Circle S or season difference.
As for Circle S, uh. We're, we're just too far from Clinton.
I mean, I've, I've hauled some of it, but it was in the summertime and it.
It's gotta be, I mean, you, you catch.
You break down.
Blow a tire, I mean, you're.
$97.
Well, I would, I mean, you don't have to pick that low bid. You can always pick another one. And, and the reason why is because I'm, I'm not too far away.
That bid's always been like that.
Yeah.
It's all, they've always got it and we.
It depends on if they're making.
And Brian will sign it off on, on the other. Because it's not feasible or.
Well, if we make the decision, since it is what it is.
Yeah. So, I, I guess, I'm, I'm just looking through all this other stuff.
It has went up, uh, 50, 50, and 68, about 19 bucks.
Yeah.
It's not ergon, got most all the bids on.
What did that build up? A bunch.
Oh, yeah, went up, and it probably higher than what these are.
Well, I don't know if it, yeah, I don't remember what that was, that, that what we used, that antony. It's 290.
That's about a buck.
But Coastal's 350. There's quite a lot of difference in prices.
Sure there is.
What page is that on?
Three.
Three, three.
Slap on her. She is.
Well, everything I'd see besides that hot mix and Millings and stuff, that's the only thing is, is that Millings at 17 bucks. Uh, on that page 14, everything else, I'm going to just take the low bid on everything. And go with Cummins on the hot mix wherever it's being made at Woodward.
Yeah, wherever you get it.
Woodward's a whole lot closer to me.
Yeah, right.
But they sometimes they're making it at Woodward.
Right.
So, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna go with, with the.
Cummins.
Cummins on the hot mix, and everything else in the book's gonna be low bid.
That's, I, I'll do that for D1 also. Anybody bid on Holland? I did look.
Yeah, they're the same price, I think.
Hardly.
I saw $105 an hour.
What was, uh, what was, uh? What was the price last you guys paid on, uh, the chicken seal per mile?
Uh, it was 4,000, wasn't it?
Yeah. Maybe went up a couple hundred bucks.
But he's the one that bids, so 42,000.
I just carry that.
That's probably right.
I think you're right, yeah.
Might vary because he charged a little more in a blade to, to chicken seal in town. Those smaller streets, narrower streets, so. The company wants me to do that.
Well, bids, it's the same. Do we need to pick a hot, Litzburger or Jim trucking?
It's the same. If it be low bid, I think whoever's available for your choice.
I mean, they're all the same, aren't they?
Yeah.
So we don't need to pick one?
Well, we're gonna probably say you should have picked one, you know how that.
I'll pick one, Randy. How many are there? Just two.
Litzburger, Jim.
Yeah.
Well, they both get picked.
You can always use the other one if the one's not available.
Right.
Your first choice is unavailable.
Put Litzburger down for D1.
Did the.
Schmidt for you, okay.
Hot mix cover went up too, didn't it?
Yeah.
About a couple bucks. I think it's about 13 or something. It's 15 now. Mark Murray had a 106 C rock. This is 26. That, that ain't going too bad, a buck and a half or two. Heavy? Has anybody seen anything for asphalt Millings in here?
Yeah, back there in that hot mix.
Yeah, they at.
Circle S for 17. 17.
17.
They're the only ones that bid.
I didn't pay attention with Mark Murray, I'd bid on that damn.
Well, it's up. I'm buying Millings from Cummins. I have been. I've got a pile that I bought down there.
From Cummins or from Venture?
From Venture. And I'm not, I'm paying, uh. 10. That would be something I'll probably have to go hash out now with them, right?
There you go.
I'm pretty good at everything else. I'm like to whip one up.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just gonna go with.
Really all the, the aircon that's got us covered on everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're not into that blade mix or CR2H. I mean, the stuff we use is this 294, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes. That's Andy Ollie.
How good?
River Isles or?
We want it for ergon.
Yeah.
So that's probably given your choice on that.
Fog seal.
For all three of them, probably.
Tac coat.
If I just put ergon on there?
Well, yeah, but I see, I don't really see anything wrong with that. Without taking low bids, even if we want to use something else.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see if we have to list that if we're gonna.
That MC3070 primer base, that's for cooking on before you chip it.
Well, they do have a primer, uh, all that we were seeing. That fog seal, once is a fog seal.
It's kind of the same thing?
Yeah.
425. Who's got it? Asphalt and fuel supply. It's still higher than a bog.
That's what I mean, okay. That's why it's asphalt.
Can I return your call?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
John, who'd you pick for Holland?
You know, I don't know about that, on that primer base.
Somebody else did.
I think that.
Well, I, I don't think.
Why they didn't bid it?
They're all big, right?
Right, but each district picks their.
If I need somebody to haul?
Yeah.
You don't actually use them.
No, right, I mean, you just pick one and then who, if they're busy, you pick, you, you can definitely call the others, not you on that.
It don't matter, pick one. Whoever's first in line.
I wonder where you have to get that. Where's asphalt fuel supply at?
There, probably the city or somewhere. Yeah, I think so.
It's delivered though, right?
Yeah, delivered. Like, I think you can go to, we can go to Dodge and get that. Pick it up ourselves.
With the ergon.
Right, ergon.
Most of our stuff comes out of Dodge up here, so we order from ergon. Unless you're laboring.
Because I need to get some, but I only need about 1,500 gallons.
Of what?
Primer.
That primer?
Yeah.
Well, I need to talk with Jimmy, not Jimmy, but Larry Letme. They're wanting me to chip some of them streets that's not done in Tacoma.
Yeah, you'll need.
50 grand grant.
Or I will. Well, actually, I don't need that.
Don't worry about that later.
I'll use this tac coat that ergon's got.
When are you gonna try to do that?
Oh, I'm gonna do that. Half a mile, I'm gonna tack it and put asphalt over. Just blade some asphalt, some low spots.
Got some hot mix?
Yeah.
Butter it on there?
And chip, chicken seal over, double chicken seal over. I got some, well, they're by Joe Scherzak.
Is that all you need out of me, Billy? Chief, this will notice.
Yeah.
More things that would be different would be that, that Millings and that hot mix stuff. Can't really get it out of Clinton.
Right, and we just need to say we all chose Cummins. But Cummins didn't list Millings, see, that's the problem.
Okay, I think I got it.
Low bids on all except for number 14, hot mix, reason approved conscience. And 18, mixed hauling, D2 and D3 for Smith and D1 for Litzburger. And everything else is low bid, so that should take care of it.
Okay.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
On favor.
Aye.
What's that gonna do to us?
What's that doing?
One bid on that.
On what?
Saltwater.
Oh, you didn't bid on, nobody bid on it?
Well, you led it, should be safe. Schroder did it.
What she did, I can't even see that.
Seventy-five cents.
He charged thirty?
Fifty, yeah, I get it, fifty, Schroder, but.
How? Is that, are you having to haul any water, or is that mess that up, or?
That's how I have you do it, but he just charges for the hauling.
Like the hundred and five?
Yeah.
And I haul my own, and he just charged me fifty, so I mean, that, that makes me have to go then.
Yeah.
Pretty much, for seventy-five.
It, it is what it is. Well, well, Johnny.
Johnny Olson.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's three of them out there that could do it, Johnny. Kirk, was it Kirkendall and Shan, or who's that?
Oh, no, LeRutlinger.
Rutlinger and then Schroder.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, it'll be what it'll be.
So, at Johnny tanks, is she there, you gotta get over her, how do you?
And I. If you low yours.
Lead, and it's not the same kind of setup, I mean, it, it worked, but slower, I mean.
I have never hauled any, and he just charged me the price. I think his price included the water. If we go back and look at that.
I think you're right, 'cause when I called him the other day to get some, he said he brought the water.
You might, should you put it in?
No, no, it's, they don't, they can't deliver it or haul it. It's just so much a gallon.
So I could.
Okay.
I could do that, then.
Yeah.
Right. Just paying for the truck in there.
It includes the water. I'm, I'm pretty sure that bid, see, we got a bid from him on that.
Oh, cause it was written, yes.
But if you wanna haul it yourself, yeah, you're pretty much bound to.
Right.
To, yeah, to buy it.
They were all in joint accord.
Okay. We're good on that one.
So I just see that one signed. Yeah.
Use that.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Discussion possible action regarding that bid, number twenty-one twenty-two oh eight, for annual ballot box bids.
And the election board chose the royal bidding.
Okay.
As their pick.
I'll move, we accept what they recommend.
I think of it.
All in favor? You think I can do business?
You said that, huh?
Yes.
Talked to Charlie Byrne.
Okay, I was gonna ask about that.
He wants to set up a meeting where we can come down. Take a look, they wanna go in there and just peel it back by layers and see what the problem is. Right there, 'cause, depending on how deep the damage is, what they have to do. Said so you really can't quote a price until.
You're talking about senior system.
Yeah, senior system, pardon me, yes. Uh, so I told him, I talked to you guys this morning, and would give him a heart sometime, so we're. Or one of us, or a couple, or all three of us, whatever we wanna do.
Right.
I mean, we're pretty much bound by what he says.
Right.
If all of you go, I just need to make a agenda.
Yeah, we got agenda, I'm good if you wanna meet with him and just go.
I mean, was that all you got?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
I mean, I don't know what I'm gonna tell him.
Well, I just have to see what's there, and then go by his recommendations after that.
And then he said, kinda depending on what, how far we wanna go, I said, well, right now, just, we wanna get it where it's not leaking.
Yeah.
And then we'll work on it.
Yeah.
So they can get back in there if they need.
Right, so.
I'll set up time to try to make it.
I just see we fixed it properly where they could stay, if that's a possibility.
Right, right. Uh, sounded like it was gonna be, I mean, that's what I told him, and it sounded, I, I mean, he couldn't quote a price.
Right.
It's gonna be.
Oh, it's gonna be expensive, there's no question. And I don't know, he probably had not a quoted price.
Right, and he may not.
No, he probably didn't know.
He might, he might.
Cause they're gonna have to probably go out and get a bill.
Kind of rebel estimate or something, but we probably have to go up for bids.
Yeah.
The biggest, the biggest issue we had with fixing it, fixing it right, was taking that stuff all through. Which we all kinda thought that would be done for us. So, I'll just see what, what he thinks is gonna happen, be done.
Yeah, I guess he, he could spec it out as to how he would do it to fix it, and we'll use that to spec the bids. Yeah.
I'll get with him, and, and we'll see what, kinda see what, get him to work something out for us.
And I don't know if, I don't know if we can do this or not, but at the last minute. Ethan said he was gonna need some blankets for, um.
Fuel.
For the, just for the fire department, which they may not even have to be used, and it wasn't on the agenda to.
Oh.
To do, to do, but I went ahead and brought them, because I thought if nothing else, we could do it on new business, I mean.
I'm good with, I mean, we have to have fuel for this.
Yeah, that was unforeseen, but that, they can also get P O's.
Exactly. They.
Life events are just not a very good deal.
Here I am.
This time of year, I know, and I, and I did say that, and too, I mean, if, it's like I told him, I said, if it has to be. Late, they just sometimes.
If they just get P O's and get late, that's just better than having a blanket there tied up that month.
Like it, okay, well, let's just not.
Okay, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it, I mean, it's, it's easily explained.
It is.
But I mean, well, if we don't do anything, we don't have to explain anything, but if we, if they only turn in at a time, they. Uh, I mean, it'd be better for him to estimate.
Mm-hmm.
What they did.
And do a P O.
And overestimate it, and then disallow what wasn't used.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, anyway.
Okay.
All right, okay, motion to adjourn. The move.
I'll second.
All right.